Good evening. I call the Nelsonville Planning Commission meeting to order. This is our first time to meet in approximately five months due to COVID. And we will have tabled the minutes and the agenda for our next month's meeting. There's a short notice on my half, letting people know that we were going to meet tonight. I take responsibility. And Becky Barber, our code enforcement officer, is going to lead us with some information that she has for us. And then also if there are any other matters to come before she will address them. Members may also need to be prepared too.
Prior to COVID, I received the camping information that Fred had researched. And I just want to let everyone know that I did give that over to the planning committee. So they've got that information and they're reviewing it right now because they're working on the camping, a camping ordinance as we speak. We're still having issues in the city with camping on our public parks and behind our public parks and ball fields. So that's, that's going to be an important issue to address once we, we get that taken care of with both committees. And that's about it.
We don't seem to have as many people walking the streets that we did have. So you obviously have been able to address that to a certain degree.
I think our police department plays a critical role in, in all of that.
How do we handle it if you find that someone is camping somewhere? What, what's the protocol?
If they're camping on city property, then most definitely you want to call the Nelsonville PD and have them dispatched out.
So what, what is the, what are the repercussions for that?
Well, if they are trespassing, then it's criminal trespassing.
Do we try to do anything like offer homeless shelters or resources that?
Yeah, most of them decline that help. But our, myself, the code department, the fire department and the police department, when we stop talk to individuals that are homeless, we offer them a ride to a homeless shelter or any kind of resources that we could drive them to.
Right, good.
I think they're building something in Athens. Aren't they another facility?
I'm not sure. We refer to Athens Homeless Shelter, Logan and length of six.
I was thinking something with Goodwill, which is close to nowhere's chicken.
Yeah, we definitely do referrals now if an individual takes that opportunity. That's on them. But it is a felony to trespass on someone's property.
Like Becky, I know earlier you had addressed that you were successful in getting several lighted houses tore down and then the land had been sold. The, the down on Poplar Street, that home that was there, there is somebody's going to be building a new home on that lot?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so you're being, you are successful. Is, is that all on you by yourself?
Oh, no. That's, that's team effort. That's police department.
Needs to understand that.
Yeah, that's the police department, code enforcement, city manager, land bank, prosecutor's office. There's a lot of people that pay, that, that actually play an important role in getting those taken care of. I, I will not take all the credit. I'm just a good team player.
So with this camping, I mean, I, I listened to the last couple of planning meetings and, and, you know, I think, I think the, the issue that we kind of face every time there's a new council, and for us this is new because we haven't met in so long, is how do they want to work with us? What do they want us to do? And I feel like I have those questions. So, you know, in, in listening to the camping discussion that they had last time, it sounds like they've got some pretty good ideas of what direction that they want to go in. So I guess as, as a member of our team, I'm thinking, you know, what, what is our role and what do they want us to do? And that's kind of, I guess, a question that I'm throwing out there because I feel like it's been a little bit different with each council. And maybe they just don't know how to utilize this right now.
Well, I talked to Elizabeth Jones this evening just to notify her we were meeting because she is the chair of the Planning and Development Committee for City Council. And she was going to send by email a couple of things that she felt that the committee wanted us to be aware of and is hoping that we would also be supportive of that. It involves some private property that some primitive camping would be put on and the concern for public restroom facilities because it is primitive. It's not required to have restroom facilities. So her committee feels that it is imperative and that if he, if he or she, whoever would be building primitive, that they would be required to have a restroom facility if you have five camp sites. Right now, they, is it the highest, who's the highest department of health says that you can have, I think she told me?
Twenty-five?
Twenty-five. Am I right there?
That was what was discussed in the last meeting.
Okay, all right. Got twenty-five. That, that would be, I would think overwhelming with the location where this would be because Hocking College Drive is visible from there over in that new area. And the same would apply to going on up and around the bend, you know, where Sonic and all of them are. So I just, I don't know. Have Becky, have, have you been approached in regards to any of, any of that?
I was at the last meeting because Scott couldn't be here. He had an appointment, so I helped him with the meeting. Elizabeth emailed me asking questions about what we were talking about. One of our, one of the things I told her is it's the camping on private property in the center of town and you're living in it all summer long and you're running electric cords. That was, that was the big issue and for us and why we brought up camping. And then I think some individual, individuals bought property and they're starting a camp. Well, the talk is they're going to start a permanent campground. And then that started a whole new discussion. So as far as I'm concerned, or as far, as far as I, what, I feel that my role in helping with primitive camp sites is I would refer them to the health department. So I don't know. I think the state laws and, I mean, Elizabeth and, Elizabeth and her committee, I'm not sure what their, their idea or what they're thinking. But as the code officer, if you're asking me in my opinion, I would rather go with the state law on primitive camping and the health department's regulations. So if, if you're asking my opinion, that's how I feel. What you guys are, are thinking is something totally different. And that's fine. If you guys come up with something, then of course I would enforce it. But I would be a bad person to ask if you want me to tell you the truth.
We'd want twenty-five camp sites primitive with no restroom facilities along our riverbank. I mean, that does seems to not, I, I don't know where the state, I, you know, I don't have any of the information about what their decision making is based upon. But I, I do know that I'm sure we would not want people urinating in the river. You know, they, they were going to fine us when our water plant wasn't meeting compliance or our sewer plant.
Well, I think if you put in a restroom, it would have to be regulated through our FEMA regulations. It would have to be flood proof and all that stuff. Now, I do work on that. But he hasn't come to me asking, you know, for a floodplain permit to put a restroom in. I think he was, I don't know what he was thinking. I'm assuming that maybe he thought about putting in just porta jones. I, I don't know. I don't know everything that Bernie's going to do. He hasn't came to me and said, hey, this is what we're going to do. I haven't seen camping down there yet to even stop and talk to him about it. It's kind of premature, I think, at this point.
Well, I think they're looking at it before it becomes an issue, you know, they're trying to address it and, and everybody cohesively worked together.
Doesn't he, does he have enough room to put in?
I, I have to be honest. I don't know. And I just, when I said I spoke with her this evening and she was emailing a couple of things to Sarah that they would like to have our support with if in fact, you know, we felt that what they were asking.
Yeah, I mean, I think we need to focus on the ordinance piece of it, the planning as opposed to the situation, the individual, the business.
Right.
It sounds like we need regulations. Let me ask this question. Are they kind of using this as a outline?
I have not been involved in their committee meeting.
Okay. The, the point I was trying to make is that they're using this as, if you want to say an outline or a framework, and they have something in there that they want to put in, like restroom facilities for five or more camp sites, then they can just make a section here. You know, and, and I would be supportive of that. I don't know that it's necessary for us to come up with that.
Would that be a zoning issue or would it be because it's in the floodplain? So if people are wanting to build camp sites in the floodplain, would that be a zoning?
I don't think we have, it's not even addressed.
I don't think we addressed that in our assembly.
It elevates as you leave town, so.
It's in the floodplain.
Where my mother lives, she's not in it.
But I think to Fred's point, I mean, he, he did put a good amount of effort into that document.
Oh, yeah.
And, and I feel like that's kind of where the disconnect is. Is I guarantee until you pass that along, they didn't even know that we had done that legwork already. So they're starting from scratch, whereas I feel like they're not utilizing us or don't know how to utilize us. And that's, that's what I'd like.
That's something that you guys should communicate with on, you know. I don't run either meeting. I just come to your guys' meeting.
I, I don't think it's controversial. I just think that what she was just explaining to me, and, and she said, you know, we did not know this document existed that you gave to them. And she said, well, you know, it'll take a little bit of time to be able to go through it all and, you know, make a determination. But her, all of her comments were very positive. She just said, you know, this is something that I'd like to pass along and, and see how you feel about it. So I only brought it up.
If they were looking at this as a framework, I mean, they can add and delete, you know, things that you're not comfortable with. They can either modify or, or take out. What I think is nice about this is that you're not starting from scratch. You've, you've got to have something, some base, you've got to have something to start from. And, and it doesn't, but Joe, you, you came across several other ones.
Well, I, I called around like this city of Galveston, all the different places because we talked about it that night. And I've got all of that. I mean, because we are talking about fees. Becky wanting to review those and, and adjust them and I.
I think it's not, it's not me. It's the city as a whole.
Well, no, I'm not.
I'm just bringing it forward for everyone else. So I think the auditor, the city manager, all of us feel that the fees haven't been updated for a very long time in the city. So that's something that we probably need to look at and see what, what we can do. Another thing I brought up was actually being able to get the permits online. So that an individual that is a contractor from out of state doesn't have to wait for two or three, four days to get their permit application, fill it out, send it back to me with a check or money order. That takes, that process takes a couple of weeks. And if they can fill out everything online and submit it online, it, it seems like a better idea to me. I mean.
I'm surprised that we don't have those available online.
We are, we're not updated. So, so we haven't updated our permit process for so long. And that's why I feel like we all do here that it needs to be looked at. We need to think about all the things that we need to do and the city can't pay for it themselves. So we would have to put the cost in, in the fees. Because there's costs to collecting credit card, you know, online. So if you use a credit card, there's a fee. And if we put that fee in with the already low fees, then the city, it's going to be even lower. So if we want to do, if we want to present this to council, hey, we, we want our permits to be sold online. We want the applications online. We want everything where no one needs to handle money here. No one needs to give me twenty-five dollars for a demo permit or fifty dollars for a demo permit. To me, I shouldn't be handling money. And in the process, they give me that money when the city manager and I approve the, the demo permit.
So I just, to, to compartmentalize and stay on topic, I mean, I just, so I do have an email from Elizabeth. I'll read it. Can you please share with Planning Commission when camping is discussed, there are things we want to incorporate. We don't feel that a campground within city limits should rely on a porta potty, nor should they have running water available, hot and cold for residents. And then number one, no camping is permitted within city limits outside of RV parks and campgrounds. Number two, tents for temporary use may be erected for up to seventy-two hours on private property. Number three, primitive campgrounds exceeding five sites are required to have a permanent bathroom facility connected with city water, running hot and cold water and a first aid kit. So that, that's the entirety of the email. But I think.
Sarah, let me, let me answer your question. Do you interpret that as, as that committee wanting us to incorporate into this?
No, I don't think that that document has been reviewed in the context of this discussion at all.
Yeah, she just got that. So that was handed to me prior to COVID or a little bit after COVID and then no one met. And then Elizabeth and her group started meeting about camping because they wanted to get camping going pretty quickly, regulations.
So.
So I emailed it too.
And that's to my point is I, I feel like there's really, I mean, there's, there's not really a lot we can do right now. I feel like what we need to do, since we are an advisory body, we need to say, you know, what do you want us to advise on? And we really need to kind of step this back. We're a little, I think, you know, just getting back into, into the flow of things tonight. And I think we just need to say, what would you like from us? How would you like us to, to best work with you?
Well, Becky had left us with the fees. And so that's, that's why I brought that up tonight. Because at that point, you're, all of the people that's been encompassed, you said, you know, we need to look at these fees and, and come up with a presentation to give to council. So it, are you still feeling that way or?
Just like I explained, I think that our fees need to be online. So people have access to them online. So I'm advising, you know, if you invite me here to advise because I'm doing the job, I don't think I should handle any money that comes in. I'm not bonded. People come to me with their permits. The city manager and I, okay then, we approve them and then they pay us. That process takes about two weeks sometimes. And I think the process needs looked at. Something's broken there. We're, it, we need to get to modern, we need to modernize. We're modernizing everything else. We need to modernize that process.
Okay.
So you think we should be making that recommendation after all of us have?
Well, I want to, I, pardon me, Paige, I want to get back on, online because the camping and the fees are two separate issues.
You're right.
I'm going to make a recommendation that we table this until they have a chance to look at what we, what we forwarded on to them. And get some type of a, a response. And then possibly looks at it for joint meeting if that's appropriate.
Yeah, I think that's great.
Yeah, I just got it last Friday. She told me.
And that's my fault because I wasn't working with any of them on camping. And I'm in, you know, I didn't go to any of the meetings and I really didn't watch them online. I'll be honest. You know, until Elizabeth emails me, she emailed me when I did the committee meeting, the last time she emailed me and she wanted, she had, just what she read, that's what they wanted the code to be. And I thought, oh, Fred's got some nice stuff. Let me hope this up. I had to dig through my stuff and then I sent it over to Elizabeth. So I mean, let's not adopt something really quickly. Let's look at what you had researched too.
She really haven't had a chance to, to look at?
I know.
Okay.
And they haven't discussed it publicly yet. So now it's in, you know, she's got a hold of that information. She's looking at the stuff that she researched. And I think anytime we do a, a code or a law in the city, we should apply it to our situation here. And let's be honest, the situation is we want this to be a destination for people to camp. You know, if that's part of it. So then we need to regulate that. So that way it doesn't get out of control.
Sarah, could, could you forward to the rest of the committee, her comments?
Absolutely.
Or suggestions?
She didn't have your email address because she said the midnight. I would have emailed Fred Holmes, but I didn't have his email address. So I'm sure she'll, she asked me if you brought a computer to the meeting and I said, not normally.
No, all right. No. Well, I, it's fine. It, it just seems like we're, you know, if you, if Sarah will email that stuff to us, we can get a chance to look at it. We can also look at incorporating this in, but I do think we need a joint meeting.
Yeah, I do too.
So, so that we can at least get in the, on the same page.
We had talked about putting your guys' contact information online on your committee. Because we have a, a section for your committee. I never did get any information on what you guys wanted to be put up to the public.
For that, for sure.
So that way people can get ahold of each one of you. So I do, I mean, if you want people to get ahold of you and know your emails, please advise me what you want to use. If you don't have an email, what phone number you want to use and I can get that put out there for the public to be able to get ahold.
When you pack, that used to be posted. I don't know what happened because I used to get lots of phone calls when I got it from our code enforcement officer and it was just passed on that way. So there's no problem.
So when I went on our website to put up our committee members, it was not on there. Now our, our council members' information's on there, but there was never a committee section.
Well, I think this was maybe just something that was done by that individual. I don't know that for sure. I just used to get a lot of calls about different things that were being brought forward. And I haven't had them for a long time.
If you guys would let me know what email or how to get ahold of each one of you, let me know and I can have our web guide put it out on our website.
All right, so we will table. Does that sound appropriate? We're going to table the camping until we have an opportunity for Elizabeth and them to be able to look at what they had presented. And then I guess we'll ask her to contact us and we could have a joint meeting if that was up to their discretion. And then we'll go forward from there. And then in the meantime, if they have some other things, as Sarah said, that, you know, maybe we could be helpful with, if they would just direct us, if there are. And Becky, apparently at this time you don't have anything that you wish to direct us to do.
No, I, I've spoke to many people on the permitting process within the city, I should say, and a few council members.
Well, I think we should deal with the camping first and then we'll do the permits and do it right away. Or do you want to move on the permit with that being presented to council?
But if it's not, I mean, I guess that's the thing. Like I would like for them to tell us what their hot, hot topics are, what, how, what they want us to do.
So would that mean that I would start working with them instead of you guys?
Well.
But I think in the past, Steve Pearson worked with you all and.
But it was him as the liaison for council.
Right.
Okay.
So it was, it was him coming back from meetings and saying, you know, this was discussed and then this is what, you know, this is all of the information that's in the code. This is the things you should watch out for and this is what they want you to work on.
Okay.
So it was more of that kind of a thing.
And he would bring to us if somebody stopped in the office and was looking at opening a business here or, you know, whatever was taking place, he would transfer that information to us and explain what at the present time was being done. And also he would report like when we had all kinds of construction in town and that, you know, he had registered so many contractors and that they paid their fees and, you know, just updating, I guess, what you would call the progress of what was transpiring at that time in business. And it's busy over here all the time, I know, because there's always, you know, meetings and, and the land bank also, I think, has been a, a great positive. But I know you've been involved directly with that too. So you're doing lots of things.
I think what we do different now is all that information goes, we never had a public information officer. Now we have a public information officer. So a lot of that information goes to him and he tells the public by, you know, online. It's, it's on our city webpage. All that information's now being directed differently.
Public information officer.
Dan Pfeiffer.
I think what would be great is, you know, I, I'm not saying their list versus your list. I'm just saying like, what are the lists? What are the list of things that the city needs to have developed and worked on? And then how does council want us to work on those things? So if, if camping is number one, which, you know, we'll say it's theirs and, and fees are number two, and, you know, they're assigning those, those things, saying, these are the agenda items. These are the hot topics. I just feel like there are so many things right now. And, and that's just, you know, let's just step back, focus and knock these things out, but do it as a, as a, as a team.
Oh, yeah. Totally agree.
Yeah.
And, and communication's important.
Absolutely.
I do want to apologize that I, and to all of you, that I didn't get the code to Elizabeth in time. Never really.
There's a lot going on.
Thought about it. Really, I had other things on my mind. I mean, so the past code officer wasn't the city secretary, wasn't, you know, all the stuff that I do. So I do a lot. And sometimes it slips through the cracks, the small stuff for the big stuff, you know, focusing on the, the problems in the city. Because there's, we have, we have quite a few.
Yeah, and some of that's on us too. I mean, we should have.
Becky, we're not criticizing. You, you do.
No, 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 no. I, I just want to apologize that I didn't get that to her, or vote to her, to you guys. I'll, I'll be honest, when she sent me the code to have, and have me look at it, to ask if there's anything that needs to be added and it was one to Gary Hunter, I'm like, oh, Fred. And so I sent it over to her. And I don't go to a lot of the meetings like Steve did. Because I'm not required to do that. Because I'm paid a little differently than Steve. I'm paid by the hour and he was salary. So I don't think the city wants to put their resources into all the silver time that it would require for me to go to the meetings. So it's, it's a different situation between Steve and I, you know what I mean?
I don't, I don't see a problem.
Okay.
Yeah, you do a great job. It was just information that, you know, they'll, they'll look at it and.
Yeah, it's communication. I think once we get your guys' emails out there so the public can get ahold of you, they can also address issues that they may think you guys need to advise on.
Yeah. And then again, it's just putting that on that agenda list and, you know, where do we start?
All right. Is, is there any other business that individually any of us have that we'd like to ask about or be informed about?
Someone asked me about the abandoned property registration fee. Did that pass council?
It did.
Okay, I thought so.
It did, and we've we've had several people register. Several people come forward with their insurance they have on the buildings. Um, it it's been good, it's slow, but I expect it to be slow just because it's new.
Sure.
And, uh, we're finding more abandoned properties as we go through, and so it's been a good tool, and we did, they did an excellent job adding to it, and Elizabeth does great, great work. Um, so, yeah, we've had a few people register and pay that that have, you know, they don't really have a plan for their building, it's just vacant, and they they have to pay it, and then we've had a lot of people submit their plans on what they're doing with the building, so I think it created some movement. We did good, all of us did good work uh, getting that, you know, we started it off and then handed it over to her, and she made it really nice. And so, that's what I'm hoping the camping stuff would be. Um, you know, we start a little, you know, and then, so I think it's all great, and I'm hoping the camping is and the permit stuff works as well as what the the vacant houses.
Sounds like it needs to.
Yeah.
It it looks, I saw today, uh, Mike Frera started on the fountain, which, you know, it's spring is here, but they closed it early last year because the weather got crappy, so we all love the fountain, and it's it's a drawing card for people also, and I'm I see the train is running, you know, far out of what there's used to be their schedule, you know, they only ran from Memorial Day, from Labor, from Memorial Day to Labor Day, and now, none of Christmas they would run, but now it's most often.
Yeah.
That brings people to town also.
So, some really good news, we had a business register um, next to Subway, they're gonna put in a fish store, like tropical fish.
Oh, cool.
So, I thought that was pretty cool.
That's great.
Um, so those are things, I think, that council's wanting businesses to come in and and or do the online stuff and talk about it during council meetings.
Well, I see we're having a chili cook-off too on the square, so that's another way to, you know, get, and I know that Barbecue moved from down on the highway on Canal up to there now in in the Rocky.
Yeah.
And the restaurant part, and so that's that's another plus. Tonight, when I came down, Tuesday night, the mine is open, and the square was full of cars, and it made you smile when I brought Mary home from school today. I said, oh, honey, look at all the people that are here. So, it, we are slowly coming back, and I think, um, that it will just take time.
Yeah.
And our swimming pool is gonna be another drawing card, so we'll just have to make positive and be positive.
We have six, we had six demos in the last probably five months, which is nice. Um, we actually got the two trailers that caught on fire next to the bike path taken out. I mean, it's all slow.
Yeah.
It's slow, but I think as the code officer, those are the things that I'm focusing on just so that it draws people into the community. No one wants to live the side of abandoned house. So, I'm focusing on a lot of the vacant stuff, you know, probably more than I am camping, because Bernie is not really, or, you know, people, the camping's not a problem right now, but what the problem is is the the vacant buildings, the abandoned buildings, the buildings that need to be tore down, working with the land bank. Those, that's my that's my, like, forte and what I like doing, um, and I focus on the most.
Well, we thank you for everything you do. Anything else anyone can think of?
I don't think we have any citizens comment. I'm go, I'm looking here, I don't see any citizen comment.
Not any that are
No.
bothering the cause.
Okay, yep.
I will, I ask for a motion to
I'll make a motion. One second.
Thank you. We will meet next month unless something changes. Sarah, is that okay?
Uh, yeah, I mean, hopefully, hopefully.
Hopefully by then, right, with Elizabeth and her first, and we'll make sure that gets announced. So, we'll wait to give the date, see what works best for them and us together. So, thank you to those who were watching, and Becky, thank you as always for everything you do.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome. Thanks.